This program is brought to you by the Kucha Chang Area Prevention and Education Coalition. CAPE exists to reduce youth and young adult alcohol and other drug use by promoting safe and healthy choices among all community members.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Here.
Michelle Hevner.
Here.
Tony Corpius.
Here.
Jennifer Windows.
Here.
Ted Saxton here. Terry Murray. Roxanne Skoza-Deech.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Elfar Jeffries.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Sub move.
Second.
Got a motion by Michelle and a second by Mike. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'm actually not adding, and under our administrative reports, if you can cross number four off.
You're going to do what?
Cross number four.
Administrative report.
Okay.
At the end.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call it a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Onto open forum. Presentation of MHS, presentation by MHS of Teachers of the Month.
Well, first off, we want to say thank you to the school board for letting the Minnesota Honor Society present to wonderful teachers and even the 10-year teachers that have been tenured tonight. We just want to say thank you for that. But our Elementary Teacher of the Month this year has been with us for seven years, and she has done a wonderful job from what I've heard. So ladies and gentlemen, please give a clap for Ms. Katie Winkle. And for the high school teacher, unfortunately, who we have not able to attend, but been here for 12 years, Mr. Derek Downey.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to the public open forum. I have four requests. We're going to do them in the order I have them stacked right now. You guys have all had a chance to review the rules that are on this sheet, and we will adhere to them, including the five-minute time rule. So at five minutes, you will be asked to stop speaking. First up, addressing us about school pictures, will be Peggy Engson.
Hi, everybody. My name is Peggy Engson, and I've been in the school picture industry for over 15 years. And I am here on behalf of Interstate Studio. Interstate is a family-owned business and is aware of the importance of local businesses and community partnerships. We are not looking to take away from local businesses, but to provide the school of parents with a lower-cost solution for school pictures. There's a lot more picture day than just school pictures. The school has needs such as staff IDs, student IDs, district use for administrative programs, yearbook building, stickers, et cetera. These are all items we provide at no cost. These items add up in terms of cost, and sometimes it is simply impossible for a local vendor to provide these items complimentary. Interstate is all about partnering with the local community and local businesses to provide the best services at lower cost. While we may be able to provide the best solution for the school pictures, the local picture company is probably able to provide the best solution for sports and specialty men photography. We really enjoy working with all of the students and staff of the Falls School District, and we hope that we can continue our partnership with the Falls, and that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up will be about, will be from Life Touch, and will be Luke Abbott.
Hello, I'm Luke Abbott. Just wanted to briefly introduce myself, talk a little bit about Life Touch, answer any questions you might have. Mike Badron, born and raised on Highway 71, from Michigan Blatt Duck. Currently run our Grand Rapids portrait office, and absolutely love to take care of your school portraits. I have brought along Kevin Battelli, my manager, to also speak a little bit on Life Touch. So I'll let him take up some of the five minutes here.
Thank you. We consider it an honor to have the opportunity to be here tonight, so thank you for that. We also consider it an honor when we get to serve schoolchildren throughout Minnesota. You're looking at a boy that came up here from South Florida in 1987 and fell in love with a Minnesota girl. And I stayed, and I found this company called Life Touch, founded in 1936 by a couple of knuckleheads that thought, oh, we're getting the school picture business right here in Minnesota. And they fortunately were able to go around the countryside, visit one-room schoolhouses, and today we get to walk in those footsteps and have the honor and privilege of working very closely with schools throughout the state of Minnesota, which we really do enjoy. I have the pleasure of working with a lot of the state associations. I've had a chance to meet some of you over the years at those associations. We pride ourselves on providing school services to schools to help create a more safe and secure environment by using the images that we take in a number of different ways. So our specialty really focuses around school portraits, and we'd really be honored to be that company for the school district here tonight. Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up will be Anthony Wolden about pictures.
Well, you fall back on Sage donating to all the school stuff. My daughter is upset that she's not, hasn't been doing it. So if she does not get it, she will not be in school that day. So not only you guys will lose, the school district will lose that money for the child, and several other parents will do the same thing if Sage does not get it. These guys don't donate to anything. You always stay local, and you run your local businesses. When you want something, donate it. You don't run out of town, and it should stay in town. I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. Next up will be Cecily Lloyd for school pictures.
I'll start as soon as I have everybody's questions. This is my hometown, my school, my children's school, and the school I have worked with for 15 years. I bought this business to provide great pictures of the children in this district because I care about their memories. This bid has always been open to anyone. There has not been another local bid since 2011, which tells me nobody else in town is interested in the job. I feel it's ridiculous that I even have to compete for this job after all these years, not to mention all the time and work that has been put into this by everyone. It was mentioned at the work session that if a family wanted a pretty picture, there were options in town to get that photo on their own time. As a board, I would think that you would want everyone to have a pretty picture if it's available for almost the same price. Why wouldn't you want the kids to have a nice picture and your book to look back on in their future? As shown in my schoolbook picture history board, I have clearly done this job enough to prove that I can do it. There is a reason. My name is up there 11 times, and the other businesses are only up there once. I have given you more than enough reasons to hire me. I want this job, and I can do this job. I care about these kids and their pictures. I hope you make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Open Forum 2.1, Chad Baldwin, Bronco Arena Discussion.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having me this evening. Those of you who might not know me, my name is Chad Baldwin. I'm the assistant hockey coach for the Broncos. I'm here this evening to hopefully gain permission to move forward with a few ideas we've been working on at Bronco Arena. Some are, you know, recent couple of months, some have been, we've been working on for a year and a half. The first one would be to gain permission to hang banners, our IRC championship banners, our state appearances, state appearances, and our championship banners from the roof of Bronco Arena. A couple alumni were talking a couple of months ago, and they thought it'd be a great idea to showcase our tradition, our history, and all our accomplishments. You know, the board on the back's really nice, but you walk into an arena and you've got all these banners hanging down. It adds a little character to the rink and kind of a wall factor. So I reached out to the Kerry Park Men's Hockey Committee, and they are willing to donate the $2,600 to buy these banners and hang from the arena. In medium with Mr. Grover, he said he'd like to give permission, with granted, to coordinate it with the ceiling work so the lift would already be available, and they could kind of do it at the same time. The second improvement we would like to gain approval for would be a developmental area in the back of Bronco Arena. A couple weeks ago, I was in Eden Prairie for one, for my oldest son's hockey tournament, and we've been trying to think of ways to get a weight room, a shooting area, skate handling area, and just a spot for all sports to use and, you know, be able to gain better athletes. So I was in Eden Prairie, and they have a black chain link, black coated chain link fence in the back of the arena. It's sectioned off into three areas, a weight room, shooting area, and skate handling area. They're all gated so you can lock them if they're not being used. People want that for the weight room, so that'll get their, getting in their rec hockey or rec baseball or whatever, their signup sheets, they can preserve the spots for teams or youth sports. So I went to Menards, I got all priced out for the coated fencing, it ended up being about $3,000. After I got that, me and a couple of other coaches from the girls' high school team contacted all the head coaches from the other sports that use the backend, because, you know, we didn't want to start working towards something if we didn't have approval because they use that for their sports. We talked to all of them, they're all on board. We've talked to some of the boosters from the varsity sports, they were willing to pitch in to help with money to put towards the chain link fencing. And also Shelby Knowsitt, her parents own a gym in the cities, and she is willing to donate the weight room equipment that her family has previously had in family for a number of years. At one point, it was worth $50,000. So that's huge, that's inexpensive, we wouldn't have to fundraise for or get donations for. So that was the second thing I wanted to discuss, and then the last one was, for the last year and a half, we've been trying to figure out ways to get a varsity girls' locker room and varsity boys' locker room. We've been through three, four ideas. One was putting locker rooms back in the arena. One was talking about going up the wall, playing baseball and practice football field. Dave Harder was involved. You know, we didn't need brand new pipe, sewer water, ductwork, heating, and at this point in time, you know, those numbers were $400, $500, $1,000, which just isn't realistic at this point in time. So what we're hoping to gain approval for is have Lukicik Architecture come in, because we're, the idea we have now is to use our existing locker rooms, take out the stairwell, and have the stairs come off the elevator platform. And if you took out that wall, you'd gain probably, I think it's like 10, 12 by 20, so the boys' room would be, you know, a big rec angle instead of that L shape. And then besides that, we would like to have, you know, the boys' varsity locker room be the boys' varsity locker room. Doesn't matter what sport, any sport can use it, but just designated for varsity sports, boys or girls. So you're not sharing with the public, you know, you don't have other teams from out of town come in and out. You can kind of hold your players accountable, you can make them take pride in their locker. Right now, it's kind of tough, you know, we have, you know, the chain link lockers, and of all the rinks we've been to, we're the only rink that doesn't have our own space. Just kind of something nice, like I said, you can hold the kids accountable, you can take pride in it, have your own space, and keep, you know, hopefully one day it stalls. So with that being said, right now, we're just hoping to get approval to have Lukicik Architecture take a look at it, see what needs to be done for support, you know, taking out the wall structurally, and move forward just to see what it's going to cost to do that, so we can work on fundraising, donations, anything, just so we can start making steps to make that happen. So those are the main three points, the banners, the development area in the back of Bronco, and then the locker room is what we're hoping to gain permission to promote.
Just so it works where I do have Chad, and with me, we'll chat on our thoughts and on this piece, so I have some comments I will leave in my report, because we typically don't, you know, converge, so just so you're aware, maybe I have all kinds of questions, you can bring it up again when we can have some discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on to tenure recognition. I will entertain a motion to read up this tenure recognition for all three people at once.
Sub move.
Second.
Got a motion by Rox. Okay. Resolution for aborting contract leading to continuing contract rights or tenure. Whereas Sarah Staples, Seth Edistad, and Lisa Simon have served the required number of years of probationary teaching as prescribed by MS 122A.40. And whereas Sarah Staples, Seth Edistad, and Lisa Simon have successfully met the instructional and professional standards of ISD 361, International Falls Public Schools, as determined by their immediate supervisors, Melissa Tate and Tim Iverson, and whereas Melissa Tate, principal, Tim Iverson, principal, and Kevin Grover, superintendent, now recommend Sarah Staples, Seth Edistad, and Lisa Simon to the school board to faculty tenure. Be it resolved that Sarah Staples, Seth Edistad, and Lisa Simon, upon recommendation of the administration, be granted faculty tenure to the extent of 1.0 FTE with all its privileges and responsibilities effective the 2019-2020 school year. The motion for the adoption and foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member Jennifer Windows, and the following voted in favor. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The vote passes unanimously, whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. I would like to add that we have some facts for those three teachers that we will be presenting, and then at the end of the meeting, it's not the real end, but we will be having a break for 20 minutes to have some KDA to celebrate those three teachers. So, and then we'll resume, but it'll be into a closed session for union negotiation strategizing. So with that being said, is Sarah Staples is here? If you could please come up.
Sarah Staples, in recognition of receiving that 50 tenure with all privileges and responsibilities, Independent School District Number 361 on May 20, 2019.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want us to hold a little longer?
Yeah, if you want. Sir, if you'll stay up. Yep.
All right. I'm getting some advice from our old board chair, and she's always ready. Next up will be recognizing Seth Edistad in recognition of receiving.
In recognition of receiving facility tenure with all privileges and responsibilities, Independent School District Number 361 on May 20, 2019.
Thank you very much. One more. Lisa Simon, if you could join us up here, please.
Lisa Simon, in recognition of receiving faculty tenure with all privileges and responsibilities, Independent School District Number 361 on May 20, 2019.
Congratulations to all of you guys. And everyone is invited to the celebration meeting. Moving on to the consent, consent of the. Number one, approve the past meeting minutes for the regular school board meeting on April 15, 2019, and special work session on April 22, 2019. Approve current accounts payable due in amount of $926,274.19. Approve payroll in amount of $388,853.30 for paid periods in April 26, 2019, and May 10, 2019. Receive fiscal year 2018-2019 budget documents for action in June. Receive the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget documents for action in June. Approve hire of Leah Bacon as public school miss for the school year 2019 to 2020. Accept resignation of Carol Aldine, paraprofessional, effective May 29, 2019. Accept resignation from Bonnie Harris, Cafe Hubbard, effective May 31, 2019. Approve hire of Matthew Salo as paraprofessional, effective May 20, 2019. Approve the termination of Summit 500 Bottle Agreement due to no budget appropriation for the school year 2019 to 2020. Hire the following summer custodial student workers. I don't have the list on here. Thank you. McKenna Holt, Andrew Stratko, Carter Germain, and Corey Battelli. Approve hire of Chris Thorson as weight room coordinator per the Admiral Position Employee Schedule, effective May 27, 2019. Approve arena rental to Fort Francis Lakers for July 26 to 28. Approve leave request from Emma Lee, paraprofessional, for two weeks unpaid leave during the week of the summer of September 2nd and September 9th during the school year 2019 to 2020 for childcare. Approve backless lease agreement for August 1, 2019, to July 30, 2020. Approve service agreement with InterQuest Detection Canines for school year 2019 to 2020. Award Brett quotation to Pan O'Golds for the school year 2019-2020. Approve honors online agreement and college and schools agreement with Lake Superior College for school year 2019-2020. First reading of school board policy number 721, Uniform Grant Guidance Policy. First reading of school board policy 903, Visitors to School District Buildings and Sites. First reading of school board policy 805, Waste Reduction and Recycling. First reading of school board policy 620, Credit for Learning. First reading of school board policy 612.1, Parent and Family Engagement. First reading of school board policy 513, Student Promotion, Retention, Program Design. Number 25, First Reading of School Board Policy 425, Staff Development. First reading of School Board Policy 405, Veterans Preference. First reading of School Board Policy 303, Superintendent Selection. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Sub move. Second.
I got a motion by Rox and a second by Tony. Any further discussion?
If I could just make a couple of comments. First of all, number four and five, we're going to be, at the end of June, at the end of the meeting, obviously, the legislature coming to an agreement, things could change just like in 1890. It's not going to be, you know, we're, at that point, everything is not fine. So we're thinking things, if you got questions on anything, you can ask, you know, if there are questions, I may, I may answer as fast as I can. Couple members meeting us, I think, as well, for many years of service in this area, in this Paris, so, thank you. There was a question earlier on Summit 500 Bottle Machine, which is separated, recognized on the order, it's having an issue with bottles, it doesn't work efficiently. So we have one time a year, which if we say we're not getting such support financially, we can return it, no questions asked. So that's what's happening until we can find the machine behind it. Of course, I'm trying, it has something to do with bottles, which is, it's out of order in the way that it's working, so we're going to look for a new solution. The parent family engagement, first reading, we'll come back to the second reading policy. There is some new requirements in there, there is Title I, I have a couple of questions on it, we're going to have to look at, and Tennessee and I were in touch today. We're going to have to look in the committee together to work through what the requirements are, and so we will work that, and I will, actually, be a community committee, if you will, can have all the members there, and so they're looking for a variety of representation. So that's my deal, is by, just like any other committee, is going to make some work if we don't get, you know, certain people signing up to sit on the committee, you know, so, or now, mainly just to cover the elementary, I'd like to cover both buildings, and we're going to have family, each group, minus the district wide, in order to meet the Title I, we're going to have to do, so, forward on that. That's all I have, most of the questions.
Any further discussion? I got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Action items, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. Do you have any more motion to start this one?
Sub move.
Oh, yeah. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guiding lines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of the resolution approved by two-thirds of its member. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public School ISD Number 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations, PCA Mill of International Falls, the camp convention, $1,750. Minnesota Youth Ski League, Nordic Ski Instructor, $145. Mr. Pete Foundation, fifth grade class project, $226.60. PCA Mill of International Falls, Weight Room Wellness, $2,500. Epic Threads, Sheila Field Scoreboard, $250. Coca-Cola of International Falls, Sheila Field Scoreboard, $500. Stuart Super One, Sheila Field Scoreboard, $500. Sammy's Pizza, Sheila Field Scoreboard, $250. Chocolate Moose, Sheila Field Scoreboard, $250. PCA Mill of International Falls, two pallets of X9 copy paper. And we have some local prom donators that we would like to thank too. There were many schools that sent T-shirts and stuff, but here's the list of the local people who had donated to prom. Blonde Furniture, 1171, Tim Hortons, Shake Shake, Hometown Hobby Crafts, Order State Bank, Randys, The Sports Shop, AMP, KGHS. Randys, The Sport Shop, AMP, KGHS, Borderline Jewelry, American Family Insurance, Hardee's, Sammy's Pizza, Ronnie's, Patty's, it's a girl thing, Farmer's Insurance, Duty Free, Masons on Main, Elks, Pro Tech, Borderline Insurance Agents, Up North Builders, Essentia Health, Magpie and Magnolia's Routine, Northern Lumber, Family Chiropractic Center, Shannon's, Washee Family GM Center, City Drug, Wemberg Transfer, Reed Realty of International Falls, Rainy River Veterinary Hospital, Northern Air Health Sports, France Garbage Service, Bremmer Bank, Northern Reliable Insurance Agency, Harmony Beach Resort, North Star Electric Co-op, MD&amp;W Railway, Shorewood Dental, Stewart's, Super One Foods, Rainy Lake Medical Center, Rotary, VFW Coast 2948, and the Rainier Rep Club are all the local businesses that donated, we appreciate it very much, thank you. I have a motion by Jen, and I will entertain a second now. Second by Michelle, any further discussions? Hearing none, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Action item number two, award the RFP for student school picture package to Life Touch for the 2019-2020 school year with potential to renew contract up to four additional years. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by Michelle, and a second by Rocks. Any further discussion?
If I could just comment, first of all, recall from our exceptional, we kind of left the fact that we would put a motion out here, be mitblamed, and someone could input, first recall, Ted and I met to put the agenda together, the feeling was, let's go back to the original so that it wasn't a race, who gets the answer first. So, it's on there, the will of the board, if it's loaded down, it would work, so be it, someone can introduce someone else, and we'll go through the, if you don't get those passes, it goes on, but that's basically where we're, why we think it's to be blamed, and why we have one in there. And so, instead of having it to be a race, we just totally, first, we went back to the original, and now it's at the will of the board.
Are you discussing points now, or later?
No, the other point is, I'll give my discussion.
Okay, any further discussion by anybody?
Is there going to be discussion about, I missed what you said, is there going to be discussion about?
Michelle was asking, and I put all to the, I'll talk about it right now, I put all to the board some advice we got, sorry, I didn't mean to go through these, I was trying to track the time, with regards of quotes, RFPs, bids going forward, and some language, and I will speak unless someone tells me differently, including that type of language down the road. And it had, it revolves around staff that have come forth, and I shouldn't have to defend, you know, answer right, a letter, if you will, in support or not, or, it just puts them in a bad place. And so, we found language in NFT comes from, I'm trying to think of a term as well, that when we put in our email for a code or a bid, whatever we're talking, and the contact person, and as soon as Mr. Holt says, "May next year," that should be the person that, you know, company contacts, if they have questions, other than that, they shouldn't be able to lobby all of you, if that may be, or anyone else within the building, his employees asking, like, will you be regular in your application part? And so, this kind of language in a lot of RFP, we haven't had it, we're running the process, but that's, unless you guys feel differently going forward, and we're not going to do this on this set deal, if we put a bid out, you know, or request for a code there, you want to call it, and decides if it's for a vehicle, you know, Washee's, Washee's World Peace, and wherever else may entertain, you want to put in, shouldn't be coming to, you know, employees and giving them a recommendation, or even you guys, I mean, you know, and I've been on X, Y, Z, and so, that's what that language will be trying to get. If there are questions on them, let's ask, if there's a contact, you can give them answers. So, that's what Michelle was requiring, and I was going to give it to you for a report, because this one is down the road, we're going to go around.
Could I add some? Now? I guess I'd just like to say that I learned a lot from this process, in terms of, you know, insurance, no-touch, extra things that come with the pictures, the meaning of what school pictures are, there's just so much more involved than what I thought. And so, I guess, I just want to say, after learning about, especially no-touch, it was a real concern for me. And so, I just think that this is the right way to go with that motion.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion to question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do you need clarification on who that was?
Go for opposed.
Okay, all those opposed?
I oppose.
Okay. That means the motion carries five to one, and, okay, that's what I'm reading right. The RFP for student school picture package is awarded to Life Touch for 2019-2020 school year. Moving on to approve the recommendation to reject all proposals received in response to the RFP for property, liability, and workers' compensation insurance, and remain with current agent. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Michelle and a second by Mike. Any further discussion?
If I could just comment, and I have tried to keep in the loop of the process again, the learnings we go with insurance, a few years back, we went through the process, we had three global vendors, which was, was great, fortunately, I only wanted to select it, you know, in the same, so let's see, and came around time to go through the process again. I would say we can find a little bit, and as you go, we put it out there, and for the most part, what happened is, someone locked up, there's a, there's a finite number of companies that were reassuring schools on the property side, as well as on the work comp side. And someone went out and, it's the way I guess it works that day, I want to work with you, I want to work with you, I want to work, you know, give them information, and they'll lock in, so they're not working with four different agents, you know, the numbers, the number. Well, someone locked the majority up, and so, we had several vendors come that couldn't give me an action. And I guess, whether that's right or wrong, some local, some not, non-local, anyway, the advice given was, let it go through, we have language, just like we have, you know, with the majority of our RFP schools bids, that the board can reject all if so desired. That being said, we ended up with three bids, there were several companies that couldn't get either both types of insurance, so actually satisfied the proposal, or they couldn't get anything. And so, that being said, if it questions, again, if there were ten, there aren't ten companies out there, we can't handle that, but in a lot of companies, we didn't see prices for, so someone locked some up, and gave you the information, whether that be a lower rate or not. So, the person that came in with property, as well as, work comp, was, is our current agent. So, but the cleanest way to do it is, we're just going to reject, and we're going to stay with that person, when they're our agent, they can go with all the companies, any company will give them a price. And that's another process, or possible way to look at it in the future, is instead of going out for insurance, you go out and select your agent, and, you know, they all come to the table, say, this is what we can provide you, and you don't have to pick one of them, then they have access pretty much to all the companies, you know, there might be some that they can't flirt with, or, you know, but, so, for the most part, we're saying, we're going to stay with, it's true or sure, it's over, that's where we're at, the next year, and have a conversation, and let people explore, and see if we can get, we have the price from the, the, the price from the bid, we might get it cheaper if there's one or two that, you know, they can get in on the game, and they want it, so, happy where we're at, that's kind of the district.
I guess the only suggestion I would make with that is, if we go this same way again, maybe there's a legal way to say, don't lock up everything?
Well, there are other ways. You could say, you know what, when you come in and get our information, give us the one person, or the one company you're going to work with, or the two companies, and it would at least give them more of a piece of the pie, but, you know, I talked to them, I talked with the majority of them, and, you know, it's, is what it is, but if it worked out, the process worked, but if it just knocked nice, and there's a doing in, I would like to, either something like that, or just go, pick up, and kind of like you would attorney, for the most part, is, you know, you get somewhat a rate, but you pick an attorney based on, you know, who you want to work with, you know, some of their experience, and again, people that insure schools are not necessarily all the same companies, or quite firm homes, you know, there's a little difference, so, it's a little different.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Approved purchase and installation of used condenser unit from Commercial Refrigeration at cost of $29,389. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Tony?
Is that you?
Jen? Jen, for a motion, and Rocks for a second. All right, any further discussion?
If I could make a comment, the only piece of equipment as far as the refrigeration system that we have not replaced is the condenser unit. The unit sits up on the hill up there, with the tank with the fence, we've known it had issues, so we need it has a tank in there, and it, a bearing went out last year, made a year to, I believe, a 12-foot shaft, I'll quote you on that, Commercial could not find, luckily it was holding up, it kept going, we were just about to the point of action, you know, you can have, just about, in part, main road if you want, you know, we were lucky enough to get a local person, I can bring out names, that was able to come in and manufacture a piece to move the bearings and the fan in far down the shaft, and balance it all, and fairly economical, we did it to work, okay, with the idea that we'll look at it in the spring. So, when the spring came, Commercial Refrigeration is telling us, it's the only item that is single, we have two compressors down there, if one goes, we can keep going. Summer hockey might be an issue, but in the winter, you'd never have an issue on board, they would work hard. The chilling piece that was redone, we had to wait a little bit of time, there's two of those, you know, everything's redundant, it's this machine, and even if this machine we replace, they don't do two separate chillers, but, this being, isn't as much newer, and they have parts on hand for the most part. So, anyway, they recommend we replace it, I got a price, and I actually have the quote here, it's in the ballpark of $60,000, and I just kind of went, we got to have someone local look at it, and so, we had this old person come, Tom and I were over there, we got into it, it definitely needs some work, it's rusted out, he thinks we can line the tank, we get it to buy us some time, of course, if the fan, there's two fan motors, one on each end, if one of those go, we can replace the fan, we can get that. If something happens with the fans themselves, I think there's three or four of them, not quite sure, you know, if we can get the fan out, if it's been in there for 30 years, we probably have a, but you run into that problem, especially when it's 20, 30 below, or whatever, don't know about that. The upper part, which is all the coils, in which what happens is it sprays water, and somehow through that process changes it back to gas, as the, the stuff goes through the clip, those, yeah, they're old, and they're going to start, like, radiator, start leaking eventually, feels we could plug some of them, and try still get by, but, how much time we can buy, we don't know. So, anyway, talked with Commercial, I said, we got to look at it, plan was to look roughly five grand, try and get some new shrubs that are all rusted away completely, and protecting stuff made, get a new line put in, we were guessing around $5,000 to buy us a piece of, which, to be honest with you. In the process, told Commercial this, that we just don't have $60,000 right now, I mean, we have some money, but there's some other things I think need first priority before. After that goes down, we could do it in the winter, of course, now we have a major problem. They found a used one that is, if it's eight years old, it was used four or five years, and then taken out of an arena that they got rid of, and they put it in ammonia plant, but they put it on old equipment, and so, they have access to that, are willing, ask, what about it, you know, a car sits for three years and isn't used, you can guarantee, the answer is yes, they'll give it up, they'll guarantee it for a year, make sure everything is good to go, it should last 20, 20 years or so, it would work if we ever switched to them, we have that piece of equipment that would also, I mean, it's new, so, give me a price on that, we got the price, installed with all the new motors and stuff that comes in, about half the price. Considering we're going to put five in to try and patch the other one and get by for a few years maybe, I'm bringing it to you, saying, I think it's probably the safe bet that we should rather do it, you know, and, and technically, we should not have any issue for years with the machines, but, so that's where we're at.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Approved two-year MSHSL agreement for wrestling cooperative with Nash Rock and Greenway for 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021. I'll entertain a motion.
All seconded.
Got Michelle making a motion, and Mike seconding it.
I'll second it.
I wonder if seconding something means that you're going to vote for it, though? I wonder if you can still second something?
Anyways.
To be clean.
Yep, that's fine.
But I'll look into that later, you might be able to still.
You can speak to it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Michelle and Rocks. Any further discussion?
If you want, again, this is a review, for the most part, last two years, we went with Nash Rock and Greenway, in my take, it's been a good agreement, the, two years ago, I believe, we had three wrestlers that went, for the most part, full-time, this year, we're down to one, we have, again, good numbers coming up through Mustang Wrestling. Is it ideal? No, just like majority of our co-ops right now, you know, there's no one that we're forced to, or working with this, and only one, we've done a few others, but, it's given some opportunity. As far as the cost of the district, the only real cost is joining the ISL, it was $90, I think, two years ago, it seems to be going up to $10, I just got a bill, it's at 100 or 110, but that's the same, we pay that for our corporate support. Other than that, we've helped a little bit with some transportation, but approaches, don't want to be anything else, probably go down, compete, and, like I said, not ideal, but we're giving the opportunity, so I would just recommend that we move forward and continue.
So I'm able to speak?
Yeah.
But not vote?
Not vote.
So, for the last two years, the co-op has been real cordial, I'm part of that coaching staff, and I've really enjoyed it, I love working with kids, and the kids I work with, they're not only from International Falls, but they're from Greenway, and they're from Nash Rock too. And we just respect each other, and it's been a really, really good experience. I think down the road, if the Mustang program keeps going good, that we're going to have some girl wrestlers, and we're going to have some boy wrestlers, so.
Is the goal, because there's so many kids in it, is it to hopefully someday field the high school team?
Yeah. We lost the program in 1993 to Title IX, and so, it's been, you can use whatever word you want, but we formed the Mustangs, and it takes time to get the little kids, we started out kindergarten to third grade, and eventually, the idea is to get them into junior high and get them wrestling, so, and the girl wrestling, we have girl wrestlers, and also, Minnesota State High School Week is looking at putting girls wrestling into the state of Minnesota, and it's going big, it's huge, yeah, that's what the idea is to.
I would say, I do, we all, just like the mentioned, coming this girls, I can't do all, they go by, and the time, it started down, the floor ages, and hopefully, by time, keep going, first team, until we can have it, I mean, Greenway would love that, it's all wrestling, Nash Rock would love that, they're all wrestling, High Falls, whether they ever, you know what I'm saying, can get enough people, I don't, but I guess, I would say, maybe I'm wrong, but, all co-ops start, because we don't have enough to do our own team, and we like to, you know, continue, or get something going and build, same here, and whether we can ever, was it 13 people?
There's 14 on Barca.
Yeah, whether we can ever get, get that, you know, roll on that big, there's enough kids, it's just can't get enough kids, oh, for. Yeah, whether we can ever get, get that, you know, roll on that big, there's enough kids, it's just can't get enough kids over for.
We'll later run that young one down, we'll ensure that they will. Uh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just curious, how do they, how does this one student practice?
Yeah, um, I usually go down to Nashwauk once a week and then for practice and then practice is held up here and then when we travel out of town, we drive back down to Nashwauk, get on the school bus, so we're as a team. And travel to wherever the meets are at, so. The idea too is eventually to have home meets up here in International Falls, we're looking at that.
It was obviously when there's two, three, four, if they're similar in size, you know, it's easier for them, otherwise, um, there are some people that come in and wrestle and help work with, I mean, my horse, person last year, the three before, but um, there are some others that they can, you know, that.
I really enjoy it, uh, the Russ Brothers from Nashwauk and Chad Snyder, uh, the head coach of Nashwauk. We were just together the other night and we just, we've got a good relationship, so I look to see, um, down the future, I don't know how long, I'll be in this situation, but uh, so far I'm enjoying it and so that's what I'm looking at.
Any further discussion? Alright, uh, with Mike extending and uh, Michelle making a motion and Rox seconding it. I'll call this to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Uh, item number six, approved two-year MS HSL agreement for girls hockey cooperative with Rainy River High School Ontario for two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I want to entertain a motion.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
I got a motion by Mike and a second by Tony, any further discussion?
If you recall, um, I want to say a month year ago, we passed a motion to, um, to cooperate with Badet and Rainy River. Um, after they heard, for the most part, invited over, we had a meeting in Badet. Um, things fell apart after that, people, um, it just seemed over there, um, either their board's approved and become fresh, there will, um, seem to be interested, this go around Rainy River now with, like, uh, like the Woods, Badet. Um, Michelle, plus we still have, I think, girls that are interested, their parents are committed and want to explore this again. They came over and met with Mr. Mason and myself, um, to come over, actually, to, you know, have some discussion and we said, we're waiting for you, you know, you get your board, however it works, I'm taking inside, um, to approve, again, you know, report and we're there, you know, I said, I feel our local support. Um, and they've done that and so we have assigned document, so, um, again, it's not a win call, they feel they have about three to four kids that would, persons that would, um, compete. And so, um, that's, that's good. Um, coaches were, coaches were involved also with me, um, so Michelle administrators and, and willing to, again, work and make it, make it cope, so. To set, will they, would they be interested, we don't know, but we're not messing with that, tell this is, you know, place that they want, and we can, we can amend and add more, but uh, let's take over, we can get it right now.
Okay. Any further discussion?
And how well their practices and transportation?
And we talked about that, early on, they're gonna try coming, most, most days, girls hockey starts in, in October, you know, for the most part, weather's not too bad at that point. Um, and they're gonna come, it's summer, like most nights, you know, girls might, might have to take later practice. Um, and then as year goes on, they're flexible, they feel they can skate a little bit over there, but realistically, they play games two and three nights a week as well, so. Might be only getting here one, one additional time, we did talk about, um, not gonna force them to come here for a single one in the midge. They'll probably need us, you know, on a boat, you know, on a vehicle, there's parents on board to, you know, drive them to certain places or, or like we go, go over that way, we're going to Warroad, we'll get them on the way to the woods, obviously, if we're going this other direction, they're gonna come here and be on the, the bus and go, you know, so. Um, the coaches are willing to make the practice thing work and, and the best it can be, where they miss some, definitely, you know, especially we talked, you know, if it was summer, now, we don't want them to come this way, you know, and it's one thing for us to, still will practice again, I want us home or whatever, but, um, so I, I think it's worth it, give it a try.
Does the high school league have to make any adjustments to have Canadian students?
See, they have, and all we've done is we filled the co-op form out, Bill's working on a couple things we have to submit. Um, I assume it's gonna go just like any other because they were in a co-op with, like, the Woods, Badet, and they still are, some sports. So school has the right rules and regulations, so I don't think it's gonna be as much work as it needed for Francis. Again, we're, we're about to have a conversation with them, but they have improved what they have to prove, where this, this school competes. The high school, you know, they're part of it right now, just with a different school, with a majority of their sports, so. I could be wrong, but I don't foresee a labor's process.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to administrative reports, Melissa Tate, elementary principal.
Alright, um, we're at five twenty-one right now, with no change from last month for our student enrollment. We have our picnic coming up on May twenty-fourth, uh, we have kindergarten graduation coming up on May twenty-ninth, at one o'clock. High school graduation is also on May twenty-ninth at nine o'clock, and most of those graduations are here in the high school gym. Uh, and then we have our carnival, our Bronco Pride carnival, will be May thirtieth, and that will be at Terry Parker Arena again. And then, um, let's see, recently, our staff just finished up, we did a book study on organizing for learning, which was, um, one of the most from, um, essential series, which was, um, what we started with as learning sciences, like at the beginning of, or again, last year when we did monitoring for learning, so we did a book study on organizing for learning and it, I feel like it was pretty valuable, it was a good way to, um, dive into, kind of talk about the teacher mechanics behind, um, student teaming versus the, uh, student use phase of that, of teaming. So it was good to just talk about those mechanics and, um, I think my staff enjoyed it and so I definitely plan to do a couple more of those studies next year. It was a good way just to encourage and learn more together. Um, and then also our leadership team recently met with, um, Sue Avery from Learning Sciences and through that discussion, we are, when, members of the leadership team are going to pilot some standards-based report cards next year, along with, I know, report cards, but we have been wanting some standard-based report cards for several years now at elementary school, but it just hasn't, hasn't happened, there's been babies and such and all that exciting stuff, so. But we have a team that's committed and we're gonna be getting some models this summer, and that team will pilot those report cards. We just wanna be more consistent with how we're teaching and how we're teaching is by the standards, so we just feel like moving by, moving standard-based report card is a better measurement. Gives our teachers from the next year a better measurement of where their kids are at versus like a ladder reading, and also lets parents know better, like, oh, my kids can do this, because they will, we will pick those essential standards instead of just like, because like, if someone that, be and, I don't really know what that means, you know, like, so these standards-based report cards, we'll be more consistent with how we're teaching. And we'll also be in deeper, but it's a team that can next year, so.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Lieutenant Peterson, secondary principal.
Our enrollment right now is at five forty-six, we're down with like the last one. We have an academic awards program, we're making it tomorrow night in the cafeteria here at six thirty P M. And those are for students who raise nine through twelve, who have earned the academic award. Our seniors last day of classes is Friday, the twenty-fourth. We'll be running the finals schedule again this year on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth and Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, where we have lengthened class periods. We're on one through four on Wednesday, on Tuesday, at five through seven on Wednesday, and then Thursday will be our final makeup day where we have P B X activities, um, throughout the day for the students who are not taking finals, and that's the last school day or the last day of school for the students. Um, also on Thursday, the thirtieth, there's an Alex senior breakfast, our seniors at eight-thirty, and then that will be followed by our graduation practice in the high school gym at nine-thirty. And graduation is Sunday, June second at three P M, at the gym.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Kevin Bogus, superintendent.
I'm gonna pick off Mr. Egerston, let go. As far as graduation goes, um, you know, hopefully everyone can participate, right now, is there anyone not planning on being there? Okay. Um, again, three o'clock, it'd be nice, two-thirty, um, it'll be a little less stressful, this year, we're not, the pictures here is presenting the, it's all us shaking hands. And then we can work if we're there, if there's someone who wanna be on a certain side of the book, well, let's, we'll have list, see, kind of see who's where, jump around whenever you want, so. It'd be nice, two-thirty, um, you can either come to my office or, or we'll come out around fifteen, forty or so. Um, some question about the whole committee, um, keep in mind with your guards like graduation, you can go anywhere, if it happens, you can get somewhere there where there's three other board members. Just don't all send together, you know, in fact, Mr. Holt sent out an email, he's doing a, a barbecue, I think, Friday for the drivers and invited board members. If all of us showed up, it's not a big, let's just not stand together, you know, as long as you're at a public event, you know, and sent as a group, we won't have an issue and it's dependable. Obviously, you know, top business and, and, you know, you're all in apartments or nature or whatever, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, a couple other updates, um, whether you noticed it or not, we posted for a full-time music choir person. Um, we got a title four award of some money, um, it's not a huge amount of money, but it was about eight thousand for one year and, um, roughly eighteen thousand for another year, just came out, sold it, used, we can't keep the choir announced, we carried it over. One of the things it can be used for is music and art in a type one school. We had the part-time music put out there, choir, we got no takers, so I touched base with, and seen that, is it worth the try? You know, I don't know, a year from now, we're gonna get more, this isn't something we've got funding for. Um, and so our thought was, let's throw it out the scene, not a full-time job, we get a taker, so if you saw it on paper, again, and went, oh, my, oh, that's a, I hope, it's not, that's what we're, um, there's roughly twenty thousand to make it full-time, um, otherwise we were looking for, and again, there are other ways to use money, I mean, things from P B X could have been in there. Um, there's a variety of things, but I guess our take right now is, we're, we're gonna deal with choir now, now I don't want to hear, but there, so we can add it on and see what happens in a year. Um, we're hoping we'll get some takers. I mentioned the R P bid language that I, I plan to go forward unless the board wants to instruct me differently. Again, not in bad ways, just, you know, there's certain things that I, I feel, um, it shouldn't turn into a, who can bet it moves here piece, so I'm gonna go forward unless you want, want to instruct me differently. Um, the legislature last night, a lot of people were watching yesterday, um, came to some agreements, um, for the most part, uh, it looks like two and two on the formula. Um, and then the rest of the stuff is to work out if there's more money, whether we get some more across subsidy or, um, the various preschool is one of them, that's supposed to be, maybe more is called today, but the, um, committees are gonna have their final votes and pally, so, um, we'll know more, um, very shortly about, you know, how, um, how we, we land. Three, two was the house and I think half and half was the, you know, senate to start with, so I guess from my standpoint, I think we fared, you know, decent. Um, and so thankful for that, I, I did think, um, our, um, Mr. Franklin, there's also Mr. Buck, I, I taped the radio show, um, this afternoon, or tomorrow, um, because I gotta get a meeting in the morning, so I, I did publicly acknowledge, not only them, but all of that served, and that's the process that we can't imagine for the most part, and so anyways, it's good as far as education goes, based on my take. Um, and the last thing I was gonna touch on is, is what you heard Mr. Wolfman, um, speak on, they have been working and it has been for about a year and a half, you know, and I'm gonna say it, for me, a lot of rooms, there's no doubt if the arena was built or if a school was built right now, things are done differently. Um, in industry, most varsity's, not just arenas, have a varsity locker room, boys and girls, that, you know, other teams don't share for the most part. Softball might have it right now, the fall is volleyball, where we don't have those facilities, we share all of our rooms with visiting teams, you know, vice versa. And so they started to explore, I mean, it's back with Gerald, who's girls coach, um, the boys coaches have been involved and go ahead, Tony, if you want to, you know, the school does not have a ton of money to stick into this, but who knows, there's, uh, like, the Wizards got a little arena from some fortunate person that donated a bunch of money. So that was kind of a, in our own board with that. Um, so they did explore, it came in just under a half million dollars to do the cheapest, most economical end of putting new locker rooms, it was a boys and girls locker room, with in essence, a small area for a weight room facility. But it was cheaper to put it actually against one of the walls, um, it was actually this end coming out, than it was getting sewer and water in the far end of the arena and doing things for fire code, um, they said was the recommendation we got, but anyway, any of those, uh, formats are gonna cost a lot of money. And I just, there's less money left for that type of money, you know, I don't know where we're going with this, so they have kept looking. Um, and we heard the idea tonight, um, they actually got a, a local contractor that's willing to come in and, you know, put some pencils, some prices and things like that. But before they're willing to spend any time and donate that, they wanted the architect to look at it and make sure there's no, you know, doing it, we would not end up in a fire code violation and so on. And so, um, uh, Jim Lukacheck, he is on board, he, they, they actually approached him, but he's not willing to come in and start looking unless we give him the nod and, or pay to investigate. Um, my gut is, um, I mean, I know what it costs ahead of time, but I don't think it's gonna be very expensive to have him come, um, look at it, he does stop and tell them, and you create all these projects. But I, I, you know, if you're not interested in them, like I say, go in and possibly, just again, money's not our option on this side. At least in my mind, locker rooms have been there, they're functional, we're doing upgrades in them right now. Um, but I guess a hundred fifty thousand into making boys and girls locker room area, because I did talk to him about equity, that we have to look at and make sure we do it the whole sides and, and fair. Um, but, you know, they're, they're willing to go after it, might be, two years, maybe five years, some homes. Um, unless you know, you don't want, you know, them packs in the area and then ask them, um, that's why you can't get it.
I'd like to see us, uh, get Lukacheck in there and investigate what it would cost to do that. I think that's a good start and lay it out and then they can go from there.
And along the same line, they, they have been, uh, involved in some of the, but like with this workout area and weight facility, when the equipment came along, um, they have one, they've done the legwork, talked to the head coaches and I, I've been checking the United States because it's easy to say one thing and, no, I wasn't willing to afford, um, it's not, um, and it's worth looking at, again, if, if, uh, they go that hard, we're giving them the nod, go that rough, even the three thousand for the fence, they're gonna have to come up with it, I think. Um, I think our guys can help, um, maybe with some labor to install it, it's not a permanent strike, you know, it's not being used, it doesn't work out, um, it does, you know, we're not really helping anything. Um, there's still, you can walk around the whole arena, it's in between, the way they have drawn up between the fire, you know, all those sets of doors on hand for fire, so there's no, um, that we can see code issues, so to speak. Can Lukacheck make sure, but, um, I guess I'm not gonna say, you know, ever, and we'll run into the, um, that piece. The third thing, the banners, they, they've been in a lot of newer rives, there are some banners hanging, um, they, I actually had to check between my desk drawer, I have the codes, um, from our friends here. Um, again, they did it all, Jim designed, um, I actually sent, um, Tim, you know, they can use, sent a written documentation of what they're asking for, because they brought the check in and I said, well, I'm not gonna cash the check, go, we, you know, and it's similar to what they're doing in here, it's only hockey, but there'll be an individual banner, you know, for each year, they want state and different. And obviously, I said, when we go in there, we gotta make sure, you know, they don't block it with the lighting, you know, make sure they're hanging, um, and, and, um, there's actually a little, there's actually money to help with, you know, for hanging by, cable, you know, they're not happy, but get them put up and I think it'll look good. On a positive note, um, we did have the lift in with regards to the arena and, um, a couple have been up and inspected, the, um, or the ceiling on the inside and it's all of this can be. Um, and that's a good thing, um, the finish actually doesn't appear as bad as we think, even on the faded area. Um, the, the beams are starting to get what they need, you know, need to be tended to, um, but, uh, as far as they, they drove around, um, and as much as they could and checked different areas. Um, other than a look and bait it, it appears, appears very good. The question right now, and I've been letting one person kind of explore it, is whether they need to spray it. it, is whether they need to spray it with some color, you know, we want, I think we could kind of wood looking, but the person of us, one person looking at it was not sure, you know, it's pretty cold, and still going to look faded, but maybe we can change that without, but I've said, maybe there's a way, you know, they spray it with all kinds of colors, you know, maybe get something that would look, so, odds are we're going to do that this summer, right now, play around, explore, it seems so, it shouldn't be done if you're just like, you're also going to start fading, you know, it's still a point you need to repaint it, we don't want to go too long about the paint, we're all, so, that's.
Kevin, regarding the RFP and the photos, just as an addendum, I, I know that there are no RFPs for sports photos, and I know that the coaches usually pick who they're going to use, but I guess I just think that we should maybe put a bug in the ear, or I'd like to just put a bug in the ear of the coaches to say, don't forget there are other local photographers that maybe we should consider instead of letting just one person, you know, have a monopoly, maybe we need to consider letting other people know that we certainly would welcome them to be considered as photographers for the sports photos, so that's all I have to say.
Okay. Well, I would like to thank everybody who's involved in everything with the initiative and being creative, and there's a lot of awesome things happening there, and it's also good to hear, good news for changing of everything. All right, moving on to LMR Jeffrey's student representative.
Okay, so student council, so student council had our last meeting on May 17th, and we completed our elections with roughly 12 new members, our board for next year, Tassan Ongal will be our president, Franz Giffst will be our vice president, Weston Karski will be our treasurer, I will be our secretary, and Harper Ongal will be our historian. Our end of the year party will be on June 28th, and our summer leadership program will be on August 4th and 5th, and we'll be seeing new members. We just completed spring sports week last week, with a dress update, and a pet fest, with a very impressive performance from the band, we did pets for patients, and raised approximately $200. Our awards banquet will be tomorrow night, we're working with MHS on that. The last blood drive that we did, we had 16 slots to fill, and we ended up having 28 people donate, and we saved 78 lives. Our summer blood drive will be on June 25th, and you can sign up anytime for that, and the last thing is, we did an adoption day at animal shelters, health worth awareness, and four kittens and two cats were adopted.
Thank you very much, you guys have been very busy in the past few months. Moving on to committee reports, community ed advisory board.
Still no meeting.
I think you might be wrong.
There was a meeting.
How come I wasn't? I thought I was on that committee.
Thank you.
Michelle and I are here. Oh, I thought I was on that one.
You're on continuing education, I mean, a continuing, not community education, continuing education.
Yeah, but I thought I was on.
We'll double check in.
Okay, sorry, I keep screwing things up.
At the meeting, we reviewed the different programs that had taken place over the winter, such as adult programming, most of it, swimming, taekwondo, Christmas and July wood trees, and a fairly lengthy report on the pals program, there's a lot of activities that go on for pals, and youth programming, it's like there's driver's training, swim lessons, taekwondo, wildlife science for upcoming classes, and then, they had also interesting news, they had applied for a Century 21 grant for before and after school learning center this, this month, and they have not been back from it yet, so they're working on that, and then there's a tags report, and for the pool, there's upcoming led bear training on May 11th with nine people enrolled, and then Rachel talked about the age-to-age intergenerational group at the Rivers Edge Villa, which they go there and do various activities, those are people that are there, such as jigsaw puzzles, wash and cake crafts, Wheel of Fortune, art talent show, cornhole toss, and beach ball, bird feeders, and ice cream sundays was the last activity that they did, and that was kind of most of the meeting, and we did discuss about the fees for classes, as far as what costs were, were moving forward.
Okay, so I do have a question about the community, we, are we supposed to be getting a record, I mean, not your record, the record of classes, is that supposed to be a monthly thing, or is it quarterly, monthly, and we don't have it right now? Okay, moving on to, unless anybody wants to further discuss that, I hope to see it in the next one. Moving on to 6.2 recreation commission.
Yeah, I can give a little report, we got our levy check from the school, which is huge, makes our checkbook look pretty good, and I want to thank everybody for helping to get that levy passed, that's for the kids, and all the different programs, so, you always feel good when the checkbook looks good, that's one thing, and then the other thing is, we formed some new committees there after the town hall meetings and stuff we had, and, and there's going to be some people working on a committee, I think Michelle's on it for playgrounds and stuff, and, and then there's some committees for trying to retain coaches and, and recruit coaching, and different ideas for that, because it's getting a lot harder to get coaches now, get people to step up to home plate, so, we're forming some new committees, and it should be, should be good, excuse me.
Awesome. All right, moving on to, I guess it will take a recess for tenure appreciation, oh, I did want to, before we do that really quick, we, about the technology committee, we didn't, we didn't have an official committee, board committee, but we did meet and put out a survey to staff, and we'll be seeing how staff would like to use technology, and we invited anybody who'd like to participate, and that is going forward.
42 respondents to the staff, and I don't know if they knew the data, but it's not a whole state.
Awesome, well, thank you guys, everybody who's filled that out so far, and encourage all your other coworkers too, because we really want to hear the teachers' input on what they need going forward, and so we'll continue down that path, there are no scheduled meetings or anything like that, but the group that is there, and everybody else will be informed on follow-up meetings. Okay, we will take a recess at 6:20, or 6:17 for tenure appreciation, and then when we open back up, we will open to go into a closed session.
This program is brought to you by the Kucha Chang Area Prevention and Education Coalition. CAPE exists to reduce youth and young adult alcohol and other drug use by promoting safe and healthy choices among all community members.